May 2nd, 2020, school committee meeting. Mrs. Burns, everyone is in attendance. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have approval of minutes, January 8th, 2020. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have the second reading, approval of school committee policies, C, not CB through CH, BEC through CHCA. Is that correct? Yes. And I'm just going to pull out for this approval BEC because a page was missing, which is the executive session. Have you noticed that in your packet?
BGE, right? Not BEC, but GE?
Policy dissemination? I thought it was executive session, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. No, my, forgive me. That's my pocket.
Is that right? BEC was the one that the page was missing. So we'll skip over that. We'll bring that back next time. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve BGE through CHCA. Mr. Bjork, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have warrants G412, R215, L42, and FS. Is there something after that FS?
Sorry, just bear.
Just FS? Okay. There are a motion. Just kidding. Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor? That is unanimous. And payroll ending 1-2-20. Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Oh, there's more. Sorry. Sorry, you'll have to give us a little time. We're getting ourselves acquainted with our online packets. Next, we have CBO5. Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That's unanimous. One abstention. One abstention?
Four.
Sorry, CBO5.
Oh, yes, forgive me. I'm sorry.
Two abstentions. And then warrants sped 12, 13, and 14. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? And that is three abstentions. How you doing, Mrs. Burns? Are we good? I know, it's a lot.
You got her here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. There are three items tonight under superintendent's report to bring to your attention. I will start, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues, Dr. Regan and Mr. Rogirio, to provide updates on the two other items listed. The first one, item 4A, middle and high school student handbook amendment. There's not something in your packet, so that wasn't an oversight, but I did want to bring to your attention a couple of developments as it relates to what would arguably be an amendment to the handbook at the middle and high school level. As you know, under Mass General Law, school committees in the Commonwealth do have to approve high school handbooks, and somewhat typically in the past, also middle school handbooks here in the district. One of the items that has occurred and emerged as an area of some oversight pertains to student use of cell phones in specific areas of our schools, specifically change rooms, dressing rooms, and bathrooms. And so sometime back in the fall, after speaking to our athletic director, as well as the respective administration of both the high school as well as the middle school, we discussed the fact that this right now is not, there is not provision around this language for student use that pertains to those areas of the buildings. And so they have worked on the development of a draft proposal that would amend the language in their respective handbooks, and that would seek to go into effect before the end of this school year. It seems like it's one of those items that doesn't need to wait with your, as the committee's approval of that amendment. And so I wanted to give you sort of a heads up on that, and with the intention of bringing that back to you at your next meeting, what that proposed change would be. With your approval of that language, that then would, of course, be immediately folded into the handbooks that would come before you in just a short period of time as we start to look ahead to next school year. So just really stay tuned for that, but I wanted to give the committee, as well as the community, a bit of a heads up on that in terms of where we're planning to take that. And I'm happy to take any questions if there are.
Mrs. Burns.
To refresh my memory, we didn't have the opportunity to review, I think, the middle school handbook.
That's correct.
Because there was some, some work that Mr. Phillips was doing. So is that, at what point will that come before, since we are mid-year at this juncture? And I think that was a good capture with regards to the cellphone piece, but I just didn't know overall.
Good question. I certainly, if I'm not mistaken, but I certainly might be, I did think that I brought that to your attention, but if not, I will certainly, I can certainly do so. And I can also provide you with the language respective to cellphone use as well, just so you have that as a companion piece to be able to compare. The second, and second item, and then we'll go immediately into the third, into the superintendent's report, curriculum improvement time, CIT day overview. Dr. Regan will provide the committee, the committee with an update. We are quickly approaching the next CIT day in the district, and then that will be followed by Mr. Rogirio for the, just a quick overview of the new financial system. Dr. Regan?
Just briefly, I don't have any handouts for you, but our next CIT day is a week from today, and we have two large chunks of work happening. At the secondary level, the majority of teachers will be working on their Stage 1 and Stage 2 curriculum maps, which is a project that you've probably heard before. It has been ongoing, but we are now in the process of formalizing the collection of these maps, which are essentially lay out the overview of the curriculum by course and by unit. So that'll be happening at the middle and high school, in departmental groups, and then at the elementary school, we've got our consultants from TLA coming in, and they're running four different sessions in four different elementary schools that classroom teachers were able to choose from, which we were very pleased about. So they went online, they did a choice of one of the four, depending on where they are in their practice relative to writer's workshop or reader's workshop. So those will be held at the North, the West, the Shawshine, and the Wurbin Street. It's not school-based, so you could be a West teacher, and you would go into the North, depending on which session you selected, but we're pretty excited about having those four folks from TLA in to work with the vast majority of our classroom elementary teachers, special education teachers, and inclusion, special ed aides, as well as kindergarten aides. So it should be a pretty exciting day. And then there's a small amount of other groups that are working in other capacities. We have our clinical staff in certain PD. We have our related arts departments working together as well. So after the day, I can give a written summary to the committee, just so you can see exactly what occurred.
Great. Thank you.
Just to bring up to speed, a couple of years ago, the town passed a warrant to purchase and install a new financial system, school and town. So it was put on hold for a bit due to some turnover retirements, actually, at the town. So right now, we're heavily involved in some training, and the goal is to go live with, it's going to be phased in, the project. So July 1st, accounts payable purchasing, general ledger budget module will be installed, and then on, in January of '21, payroll. So it's going to be phased. There's quite a bit of work. So right now, we've had, I think, six training sessions with members of the town, certain central office personnel. We have another three or four days in February, some training, and then there'll be some other training with other staff, administrative assistants, and so forth, as our accounts payable, our purchase requisition and purchase order processing will be updated within a new financial system, a system called MUNIS. Many districts within the state use that, and again, that went through the town warrant process back a couple of years ago. So that's kind of where we stand right now.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to old business. There is no old business, so we'll go right into new business. Mr. Fenely, check the timestamp on that.
Why does it have to be me?
I'm just, I'm just making a point. That brings us to 7A, which is the FY21 school year calendar, first reading. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Item 7A in your packet, your Google Doc, there are two items, and fortunately for the community, one is a cover memo, and that is followed by a draft overview of the school year calendar. It is customary to bring recommendations for a calendar before the committee, ultimately for your approval. This is the phase of trying to put forth and finalize FY21, or the 2020-21 school year calendar. And this is the usual time in which we do that. So this is here tonight for a first read, if you will, and equally important to take any feedback that you might have, so that we can go back and take another look at this calendar. I do want to point out that this has been a collective effort from members of the district leadership team in terms of trying to take an overview of our calendar and makes, and have recommended a few small tweaks and adjustments here. I'll draw your attention first to the memo that is in the packet. Some of the highlights that I just call out there, first off, total days in school. This calendar, as is the case for this year, has 180 school days. That is the magic number, as established by the state in Massachusetts, or the state here. And we have 182 days for staff. That's a contractual arrangement, if you will, and so this calendar that's before you, if calculations hold and are accurate, should reflect 182 days for staff in total, 180 days for students. The opening of the school in this, in this proposal before you is set for Monday, August the 31st, and that first day will be for staff, consistent as how we've embarked upon this in recent years. Tuesday, September the 1st, will be the first day for students in grades 1 through 12. First day for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students, as is also somewhat customary here in Wilmington, follows afterwards, and that's on September the 8th. Early dismissal day on the first day for students. You'll recall that this year, we, with your approval, opened school on the very first day in an early release, and that time was provided for staff to collaborate and work on continuing their preparations for a myriad of things to open school, particularly though around student education plans, 504 plans and the like. This proposal before you does again replicate that, and is hopeful that you will approve an early dismissal again on that very first day for students. This proposal also includes the day before Thanksgiving, or Wednesday, again, as a non-school day, as was the case this year. I'll just comment on that briefly, that I can truly say to this point that that's, this is, this is an aspect of the calendar that I expected to have quite a bit of feedback, either one way or the other, and I really can say that I have not, with the exception of the first time today when I was talking with some staff in my superintendent's advisory group, and that came up as a bit of a topic, and it seems like there is, from the accounts around the table, both for and both against, both those that liked it, those that didn't. So I will say that I didn't collect any data on this, but I just wanted, I wanted to share that with you, and perhaps you've heard from the community about that, that maybe you can provide an offer to. The real heart of the calendar and proposed changes is seeking your approval to add a handful, four to be specific, of early release days. And those early release days are being proposed along the lines of trying to provide additional professional time, collaboration time, to seek to support the work that I know you know well, that we are trying to do across the district in a whole host of areas. I mentioned this before in this room, to this group, that I'm worried about the capacity that we have to be able to attend to all of those things on a number of different levels, not the least of which is time, time so necessary for our staff to engage in professional development, collaboration, and collective meeting to try and advance these things forward. The memo, as you'll see, provides you an overview with a brief glimpse of what surrounding districts or comparative districts have in terms of the total number of early release days in their calendar, and the full professional development days. And as you can see, it's somewhat all over the place, for sure, but within that table, you can see a comparison for what currently is the case and what's proposed. And so that's a broad overview. In essence, I would suggest to you that the calendar that's before you is really largely unchanged from the current year. It does take into account all the contractual commitments and such that we have, but it does seek your consideration to add four early release days for next year. And with all of that, I'm happy to take any questions, if you like, on the calendar.
Mrs. Burns. So in my years, I've been a part of, actually, my earlier part of my tenure, the push to increase learning time within the classroom, increasing it to 90 minutes from, I think, 40, 45 minutes. Time in learning is, was a huge push. So my, I'm certainly not opposed to the rationale or the proposal within the calendar, because I think that's always been the struggle, how do we increase learning time but give staff opportunity to collaborate and to meet departmentally and individually, to on IEPs, and just the matters before the departments. So my concern is, is how much of an impact is this, is this going to have in the classroom with learning? I'm a huge supporter that learning needs to take place in the classroom, to be taught in the classroom, and then supported outside through meaningful homework. So I just kind of wanted to pluck your thoughts on that, please.
It's a great question. So first off, let me say that we have taken a look at what the impact of this is and where we currently stand. Let me back up. In terms of the alignment for the regulatory hours for instruction as set by the state. So if I'm not mistaken, and any of my colleagues can certainly jump in, 990 hours is the, the time in which schools at the secondary level in the state need to comply with or need to hit minimally, and 900 hours of instruction for the elementary level. By our review, and we actually fairly recently were engaged in this review through the coordinated program review process, you may recall. So this is data that we have recently collected and again returned to with a view specifically to what would the impact be here. I can tell you that, taking into account the proposal here around the time, we still are within those limits, that we don't fall, that is to say, we don't fall below 990 or 900. So I put that forth you. This memo didn't capture that. That's certainly something that I'd be happy to bring back if, as a committee, you'd like to see. I will point out one thing, because I do think that it's connected to this, and just drawing attention back to the Thanksgiving Day, because I think it's important, as we're counting hours and minutes, which I completely understand and agree. In that old calendar proposal, of course, you'll recall, with, with a very early dismissal and the traditional approach of Thanksgiving, that was a day, considered a day of instruction. We added that, by the, by the approach that you authorized for the approval of this, we added, in effect, a full day as another part of the calendar, but you certainly could argue that we took some of that away with the insertion of an early release day at the beginning of the year. So I just point that out, because I think that that's an important piece to think about. If you're thinking about, well, what was the impact of adding that early release day this year? There was an impact, but I would say it was almost a net, net, no loss in terms of how we approached the Thanksgiving Day. This would clearly impact instruction. It would clearly, it would clearly result in the decrease of some hours in classrooms. There's no question about it, and that's the careful balance and trade-off here in terms of what this proposal might lead to. The day of, the number of four was something that was, you know, we talked at some length about this, what's the right number? It's a number that seemed to be clearly adding days, but hopefully for our family and community, not to the point that that became problematic as we looked at the calendar longer term and tried to spread out those days with other holidays and such, and it seemed to be a number that would work within reason, so that's where we landed on that. Nothing more specific, to be quite, quite honest. And certainly, if you wanted to talk about what that total number of days looked like, of course, I'd be very happy to do so.
Well, I would like to at least, if the board does move forward with your proposal, that kind of feedback, and that'd be kind of brought back to the board after, I guess, a year's time, so that we can revisit if there's, you know, I'd be interested in how the staff, you know, how they benefited from it. Granted, we're not going to see this for quite a while, but I think it would, I'd like to see, you know, to hear how it has, or has, pros and cons of how this works towards the, you know, our students.
If I may just add one point to the, whether, whatever the number of days of early release, or whether you do entertain that, I think I do, if I, I do note that in here, if I, if I remember correctly, it would be my intention, regardless of the calendar here. I do think that us, as a, as an administrative or leadership team, being mindful of any professional development time, and laying out what that map looks like longer term. And it's a conversation, in fact, that I've already started with the leadership team around, what are the key priorities that we need to dedicate time to, and how does that fit in, from a jigsaw puzzle sort of way, if you will, in terms of whatever time that we do have to work with? So even if that's no change to the calendar, and that's certainly fine and understandable, or if there is a change here, my commitment to you as a committee is to come back in the spring with a plan around what professional time looks like going forward, so.
I guess what I'm just trying to avoid, just to, the end-all, is that I don't want to get back to an area where all I'm hearing is, we're teaching to a test, and I think that's, and it may not be the right way of saying it, but with, you know, the state testing and those assessments, I just, I just don't want to go backwards. I support the need, without question. It's just trying to find the time and the day, and time is our enemy, I guess, in this juncture, and just finding that, that balance, you know? Thank you.
Mr. Samaha.
Yeah, I think I agree conceptually with this. I think the need for professional development is always, there's always that need, it's going to be, it's going to be great, trying to find that time, especially, you know, the limitations, the way they are. The other part, and I don't even know if there's an answer, I just want us to sort of be cognizant of the fact that the more half-days we have, the, the impact that that has on working families, when you have both parents working, it's, you know, childcare can be difficult. So I think that that should also be, you know, considered as we go forward with this.
Mrs. Newhouse?
Is, I'm assuming with most half-days, CARES is still an option for the additional half-days as well?
It is, and that would be the continuation of the approach.
For the younger kids.
It is for the younger kids, however, from my recollection of it, when, like, if you were, if you did CARES, like, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the half-day was like a Tuesday, you couldn't get care for that half-day. So if you did five days a week, then you're fine, but if you split it, it was a little different, so, anyways.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Ragsdale?
So I was looking at where, where those new days fall on the calendar. So it seems to me that one, so one is out until October, a new one in December, one in February, and one in March, and they all, I think, they all appear to be on Wednesdays. And I can see there being a certain benefit of consistency. I mean, this can, to some extent, help in planning purposes. A lot of people's schedules revolve around the same day, so if it's always on the same day, there's some kind of consistency to that. But I also wonder if that means that some of the same classes are going to be impacted each time. So looking not just at the general, you know, it's one thing to trade off saying like, well, you know, you lose some instructional time, but we look, we balance that against what we gain. But if you're losing instructional time in the same thing every time, which is more likely to be the case at the elementary level where the schedules are not changing, I wonder if that's something also to consider, if, seeing, seeing what, you know, particularly what, what subjects are going to be impacted, because they're not going to be impacted equally.
Right.
At the elementary level, whatever kids have at the end of the day is what they're going to be missing on those, on those four days. So that's something I would think we'd want to take into consideration. Your memo says that in the spring that we'll get a little bit more detail about what the, like, basically what they'll be used for, like, what the specifics are that, that we would intend to use that time for. Can you give a more general sense now about what you think the best use of that time will be? Because I think if we're going to make a change like this, I mean, I go back to Mr. Samaha's point about that this is going to be, you know, have an impact on working, working parents. You know, any early release days are always, you know, a problem for them, and we're contemplating nearly doubling the number that we have this year. And if we're asking them to, you know, make that, make that commitment and sacrifice to have to be able to make those arrangements, it would, I'd like to sort of be able to also present, here's the benefit that we think we're going to gain from it, at least in some general sense.
Yeah, it's a great point, and I mentioned that we've, we had an initial meeting at our last district leadership team meeting, where we started to identify the wide number of areas pertaining to our strategic plan. And there's certainly some curricular work that has started and that's ongoing, that you probably can quickly imagine might fall into the realm of professional time. There's also a number of areas, as it relates to our strategic plan, that are, we are heading towards in terms of the necessary engagement for staff around equity, around inclusionary practice, around MTSS. So there's a wide number of things that very quickly sort of filled up a whiteboard, and now becomes part of our responsibility to figure out how we plot these. And that's regardless of a calendar change. I mean, we have to, we have to think about any and all professional time we have, whether that be staff meeting time, whether that be CIT day, whether that be some sort of creative release. You know, if we are going to set our sights on accomplishing what we set out to do, whether that's in the realm of curriculum and instruction and/or that strategic plan, we have to figure out how to make that work. And, and so this is one, one thought on how to get there, but it, again, I can certainly respect the impact that it has on families. It does, that's understood. It's a very fair point.
I think you're still, I think you're still, I think you're still on.
I still have the floor.
Yeah, I think you're still on the floor.
Still recognized by the chair? Okay. One other thing about the, about the end of school, and just a small, a small thing that, because Labor Day start, you know, is late this coming year, we're starting later than usual. So usually, we're beginning in August, the end of August, and we're not starting until September for, for students. At the end of the calendar, so lists, the 17th is the last day of school if no snow days are used, and that's not the way that we usually phrase or describe the last day of school, because we usually built in the, in fact, we're required to build in the assumption of five school days by, by regulation. So I think that, that, that the last day of school should be described as the 24th, you know, assuming all school days are used.
Right.
Which is, because, which is how we've, which is how we've always done it traditionally in the past. It also kind of gives people a better idea, just like, yeah, we might be pushing late, depending what happens with, with the snow days next year. It's like, we might not be out of school until near the end of January.
You know, it's funny you mention that. This came up as part of the discussion when we were taking a look, with Tristan in particular, and some of my colleagues, and so I actually have seen some calendars in which both days, at least initially when you said it, are clarified so that you know what the heading date is, and perhaps that's something that we could layer over top of that, so that, but your point is well-taken, and that's true, with the late start of school, with, where Labor Day falls, it does have an impact in terms of pushing us out later, so. We can certainly make a modification for that and note that.
Can I just have a couple of comments? So I conceptually agree with the idea of providing more time for the PD, but I agree with my colleagues and the concern for, for time on instruction and for, for families. So my ques, I'm looking through it, I'm just wondering if we were to sort of make a suggestion or compromise a little bit. I'm looking at that, say, December 16th, right before the big break. So as a parent, I'm looking at that and saying, boy, we're done the next week. Do we really need that half-day right there? And is that going to be the most productive use of a half-day when we're so close to the holiday? I'm not sure.
Consider the 23rd in doing so? I mean, granted, no.
No, because then I think that's not, yeah, because staff would need to. No, because then I think that's not, yeah, because staff would need to, they want to begin their, right, so.
It's a full day, so that's why.
So I guess if we were gonna, if we said, it just feels like a little bit too much to jump from where we, because we're also not, I mean, there's still parent conferences, those are more half-days. We're not even looking at that, right? We're just looking at these early dismissal days. So I feel like that might be a bit, that, that one, maybe we could just talk about removing that. And then my other thought was the week right after February vacation, the 24th. Again, we're just coming back from that holiday and already parents are disrupted after having to, for many of them trying to find childcare for, for that entire week. And now here we are back and, oh, by the way, Wednesday's a half-day. So I think that might just, those may be two areas to consider as well as the, the two in March. But so, just some food for thought as we, as we think through it and see what the feedback is from the community, too. I'm sure that there'll be some, so. All right. Anybody else? Great, thanks, everybody.
So can, may I just clarify? I'm sorry. So are there any changes right now as we think about going into what is hopeful to be a second reading that you'd like to see made?
So I, so is anybody else?
Question.
Would we like to see changes before next week? We've all made some points, but are we looking for changes for next week? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, before the next week.
Are we, so during next week, we'll be, we'll be voting to approve it next week? I mean, is that, is that, is that something that we're, are we approving it? What, how's that work?
Well, eventually we, we have to, yeah.
Right, but it wouldn't be next week?
It could be.
Could be.
It'll be the next meeting, actually.
Well, not next, right, but the next meeting.
Two weeks, yeah.
So you'd be, would you be looking, I guess, are you looking for changes? Are you comfortable with this coming forward again?
I think you've raised some very poignant points as to where the December and February days land. I would like, if, if it's possible to re, for you to go, give you time that where you think that, is there another, is, is it removing or is it juggling in a different area of the calendar feasible? Because I, I hate to see the removal of both, although I, you know, I think one would, I would be comfortable with. Because I think even if it's a stepping stone for the calendar after that, I, you know, I'd like to see that. But I think Jen does make some spot-on concerns with regards to where the December one and the February one lie. And I'd like to at least give you that time to crunch on it and, and see if there, if it's something that would, you would consider changing or if there's another balancing act we can consider.
Other thoughts?
I would, I would also like to see some consideration to them not necessarily being all on Wednesdays, or perhaps some consultation with the elementary principals. I guess maybe, maybe I'd be looking for either like a change there or some assurances that, you know, the, you know, teachers and principals at, at the elementary level who would, you know, be seeing more impact in particular, in particular subjects. Or confirm whether that's the case. Maybe, maybe things could be balanced around so that they switch it up for those days so that it's not the same subject that's being missed every time.
I will just say, the reason that we, the reason that you see this in this format of the consistency was, I think, if I recall, an effort for some feedback going into this calendar this year around, that was difficult for families to perhaps always remember, and so we shifted to the one day a week. But the point is well taken, and, and certainly I can go back and talk with our principals just to be, to be crystal clear in terms of what the impact of that is and, and might there be other opportunities to sort of shift some things around.
Because I think, too, I know with kids who are receiving services, whether it be OT, PT, they, they may land on Wednesday, so that would put another thing to consider for special, to try to fit them into another piece of the week with, you know, into their schedule.
I kind of, I like the consistency of knowing it's Wednesday. And then I actually look at these early dismissals, which are not Wednesdays, and I wonder, would it be better for families just to have it all? And for CARES in some ways, because if you're Wednesday, then you're Wednesday. And so you know you have that, but then you, you add in those Thursday early relief for their parent conferences. So that does throw, I think, people for a little bit of a loop, but I'm not sure we want to go there. I, I like the consistency of Wednesdays. And I think at the elementary level, the teachers have so much control over their schedule and their day and how they, I'm gonna, we'll just make sure we do more literacy here and more math here. It's not, it's quite the same at the high school and the middle school, but I think at that level, they have some ability to shift things themselves.
Right. And that, that might be a perfectly fine solution to that, to just have some adjustments made at the, on the individual, you know, classroom levels on, on those days.
Well, I can certainly explore that further and come back the next time around.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 7B, FY '21 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. That's what we're all here for.
Thank you, and we'll move on to 7B. It is FY '21 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. I'll ask the other members of the Central Office Leadership Team, if you would please, to, to come up and, and join us. I want to start by thanking and acknowledging the other members of the leadership team who I know the school committee can see here in the room. I know the title is Superintendent's Budget, but it truthfully is far, far greater than that. And it's a, it's a, it's a collaborative budget process. And hopefully, the school committee and the community gets a sense of that as we move through what I know are a few slides in this presentation. We'll, we'll note the time.
It wasn't 7:30, I'm sorry, it's only 56.
That's right.
I apologize.
So with that, you are going to hear this evening from, actually, all members of, of the Central Office Leadership Team. Each has a part in this. And again, to acknowledge my colleagues as part of the wider district leadership team who are here tonight as well in, in support of this budget. It's obviously an important conversation. It's one of the most important roles that I know you play as a committee, and so we want to make sure that we, we attend to the, the budgetary message of, of the district going forward. So tonight's presentation, which is available online for members of the community if you're interested, has a number of different parts in terms of how it has currently been developed and which we'll move through this evening. The budget development process and overview, a snapshot of the WPS budget in context and what it, what it really entails when you start to peel back the layers of a rather large onion and obviously a sizable amount of resources that are ultimately requested from the taxpayers of Wilmington. There is specific time to pay attention to the strategic plan within the presentation and also specific time to highlight some of the important departments around curriculum and instruction, student support services, and information technology as well as capital. One of the things that we've tried to do in this budget presentation that I think has value, and you, you won't necessarily see an awful lot of these references, but I do think that it's important as we start to talk about comparative measures in different ways. And so with deliberacy throughout this presentation, there has been an effort in a couple of different areas to draw attention to how we Wilmington Public Schools compares to our comparable school districts. I think it's important to note, because we're, we're really talking about two subsets here. It's not just geography, and it's not just the Middle Sex League as a, as a sports framework. There are two sets of communities. The first is the RADAR or DESI, Department of Education Comparable Communities. And in fact, as some might know, but some might not, the Department of Education has a, I'm not sure what to determine, but a, but a structure whereby it identifies for communities, comparable communities based upon a number of different factors. So you might see some there and you might question why they're there. I can't tell you exactly why, for example, Sharon is, is considered by the Department of Education to be a comparable community. I do know that it has something to do with size, but it's more than just size, and it's certainly not just geography. We also have a subset on the far right that's the town-identified comparable communities. And one of the first things that I did upon my arrival to the district last year was to check with the town and what, what communities do they compare to when they may be talking about other aspects around town government. So just to draw your attention to that, and you'll see a little bit more about that through the process. The, this is an overview of how we've got to this point in time, and it's beyond December, of course, I know. But again, as you've heard me say before, and one of the things that's not lost upon me, or lost upon the request of those that are here, is really when school just gets up and running, the, the task shifts pretty quickly to, to start to build the budget for next year. It takes a, a long, a long time to get to this point. You see this slide pack here, but I'm sure you can appreciate hours and hours of work that have gone into getting us to this place. And, and this provides sort of a 20,000-foot view. But beneath that, there's been an awful lot of work, and this provides a highlight of the different steps along the way. This is obviously the second conversation that we've had here. You'll recall back in December, the preliminary budget was presented to the school committee. And again, for members of the community, that information you can find in that presentation, you can find online. So FY '21, which is what we are referring, of course, to the next year's school budget, the budget in terms of context and how we start to build it. Fixed costs, there are a lot of them in, in a operation such as ours. Those include legal, other obligations and assessments. And so that's, in many respects, the foundation upon which we start to build the budget and Paul starts to link together the numbers. There are legal mandates that are far and wide in terms of requirements that we need to ensure are in place, whether that be services specific to a particular child's needs or some other aspect. Special education programming, that'll be touched upon a little bit further in the presentation in a little bit more detail. Sections and grade levels, which we'll also talk about in a moment, in terms of where it looks like we're going around enrollment. That's a big part, as you can appreciate, of trying to put forth a budget request. How many students do we think we have? What are our guidelines? What are your guidelines? I should restate that in terms of class sizes and ranges. And what's the appropriate staffing to deliver, to deliver all of that for, it's really more than pre-K to 12. And we should modify that going forward because we obviously have, we have some students that are, are beyond that 12th grade. There are some assumptions that we made at the very early stages that really are the centerpiece of how we put together the pieces of the budget that's before you at this point in time. Enrollment, that's what we're looking at and we're projecting right now. Again, that's a, that's a hard thing to do as we sit here even in January, looking ahead to how many students we think exactly, maybe in classrooms. But based upon the past, and again, I'll, I'll show a little bit more detail here in a moment, 3,182 students are what we are projecting right now for pre-K to 12 students in district. There's an anticipated enrollment based upon the information that we have right now before us of 65 out-of-district students. It is important, if you were to dig into that, or members of the community were curious about that, that's a, it is a slight increase from current enrollment. However, the way that things sort themselves out, it's a slight reduction in actual expenditures. Grants are a big part of our budget to support our operation, and those are taken into account. Legal mandates I mentioned earlier, professional staffing guidelines, which in some cases, those are obviously governed by what your, your contract points to. In other cases, there are other aspects that fall into place in terms of programs. Transportation, transportation services, I think that's an important piece to just, again, be mindful of that in this operating budget, there's a considerable number of resources that go towards transportation services, the yellow buses in district, as well as the transportation of students who may be in out-of-district placements, and extracurricular programs, some of which you hear about on a somewhat regular basis. To shift to enrollment, first off, you, there's a slide that'll follow, and it is in your presentation, in terms of sort of the range historically of where we as a district have been in terms of a high and in terms of a low, back to a high of just, just under 3,900 students in '06, '07. We are on a, on a, on a slight decline, a modest decline perhaps, or moderate, I'm sorry. And over the last 10 years, we have, it is true, dipped by a little over 500 students, 550 students. Over the next five years, if trends hold and if there are not specific building projects that may enter into the mix, we anticipate that we'll continue to decline by just under 200 students. Enrollment at the elementary and middle school level, that has fluctuated greatly. And if you take a look at some of the data that follows, it'll, that'll be pretty easy to, to see and to point out. And declines in enrollment from ninth-grade students at, at the high school and the student retention piece that we've talked about also here, part of the enrollment. Student retention, I will speak a little bit about that because I know that that's a source of some inquiry from members of the community and, and what that looks like. And actually, when you take a look at that over the last four years, maybe five, you see some fluctuations of considerable note. We do track the data around students that are leaving the school system, leaving Wilmington Public Schools after eighth grade. But it's, I think, important to point out a couple of things because I can appreciate that some might say, well, how do we compare to other school districts? And I would suggest to you that that's really, that's really not one of those things that an apple-to-apple comparison could properly yield. There's a whole host of factors that could account for why a student and a family decide to leave a district. That could be the pursuit of private school. That could be the pursuit of, of a technical education because that's believed to be important. So I think that that's one area, this is one area, I'm sorry, where benchmark data for those comparable communities really, I think, would be of no value overall. And important to note that this year, retention rates returned back to, if you, if you will, levels that we saw prior to FY '17. So here's a view of what that actually looks like. I know there's a lot of numbers there and a lot of data. High school graduating class down the left-hand side, the number of students that class, so moving from left to right, the number of students in class at the end of eighth grade, you can see there. Number of students leaving after eighth grade, and as a percentage, leaving after eighth grade. And so you can see that in 2018, 23% of students left the school system. You can see that the current class of grade 10 or class of 2022, that rose back up to 33. And when you take a look more historically, in that low 30s range seems to be where we've hovered more often than not. I would suggest that to you, the two outlier years are what you can see there in the 23, the 23 range. Number of students going to the tech, I know that that's of interest to many. You can see that number there from 2018 through until current grade 10, and the number of students going to private school. Enrollment, just a different visual of what that looks like. Hopefully that, that comes through, maybe not so great on this screen here, but in the PowerPoint, you will see a number of different color, the coloration of this that showcases or highlights out-of-district. And that's the top. High schools in the purple, middle school green, elementary, the red, the largest band, if you will, at the bottom. And then the very bottom is, is pre-K. And this, as you can see, dates back to 11. And so you can see this gentle decline, if you will, as we enter into FY '21. A whole lot of numbers here, really tough, I'm, I'm sure to see on the screen, but again, for somebody who may be interested in the, in the materials in the presentation. A nice visual, this is attendance that Paul does a terrific job tracking historically. And this really is the, the tool in which we, which we project enrollment based upon a three-year average. And so, again, it's not a science. There are things that can impact and change in a moment's notice. What's the housing stock turnover? How strong is the economy? Are there new building projects? But by and large, that three-year average is what we use to try and make predictions going forward. Final slide, I think, or two here on the enrollment piece. So important to point out, this is the, the sort of the origin around where we start when we take a look at enrollment, and then where we take a look at how that lines up with the classroom teachers that we need. And this, that table, that information that's in that table comes directly from the collectively bargain agreement that is a committee you have in place. And that shows the guidelines, CBA, the collective bargain agreement, at the different levels. And so we really utilize that, the administration utilizes that to formulate what the predictions are pointing to for enrollment, and in turn, how many sections and how many staff we need. And we, we make adjustments according to what our projections are looking like. Just a, a couple of points to, I think, center the discussion around as it relates to the strategic plan because this is a, this is a piece that I believe we really, when we're talking about budget, when we're talking about priorities, when we're talking around the intersection around professional learning time and what is that we are seeking. After all, this budget, a budget, I think, goes towards trying to seek those ends as a school system. You know that as a, as a, as a community, we came together last school year and developed a new strategic plan, and we are in year one of that plan. It includes a new mission and vision that is hopefully, as time marches on here, providing some some, some focus and clarity for us as a school community, as an educational community, around what is most important to us and where it is that we are going. There are a number of priorities that you know well, and that have been presented to the committee, have been established here. And I think it's important to point out that right now, this plan, as it stands, does include or does earmark financial resources to help support the continual rollout and work that's associated with or connected to this plan. I will tell you that right now, we don't have all of this money allocated. There are areas, and it's really just the case of where we find ourselves here in the midpoint of the year. Talks have started, plans are being explored, but right now, we don't have a specific line-item detail for that money. But I wanted to bring to you a budget that had some allocation of resources to help support that work. A quick overview, and hopefully a reminder for our community around the new vision and mission that we have here in the district, that was, again, the, the work of many who came together and did some great work to help shape the future direction of Wilmington and the Circle of Values, you have seen before and will continue to see again, as it shapes where we're going as a school system and what's important to us. This is an overview of the specific objectives that we have in place for the strategic plan in the four areas: student learning, social-emotional learning, culture of inclusion and learning environments. And if you'll recall, all of these have specific action steps that span the next three years, this being year one. In particular, if you were to be, if you were to be curious around where this budget lines up with some of those objectives, I would suggest to you that these capture that. Student learning objective and the respective initiatives, you can see there specifically around tech integration, program effectiveness and technology integration. With that, as sort of the backdrop, intention now is to get into a brief overview of each of our departments. Again, there's so much that I know is wrapped up into our operating budget around the resources for people, but I think it's really important for the community to also know that there are a whole host of other things, thinking back to the legal mandates, programs and services that we need to deliver, that I think is important to spend a couple of minutes focusing on because they are an important part of our operation as well, and thus consume a number of resources that we, we need as part of this budget. And so with that, I'll turn that over to Brian.
So I'll just walk you through just a few of our curriculum department budgets. So we have a curriculum account that has just over $300,000 in the FY21 request. This account is used largely for renewals of subscriptions, membership dues, costs of our mentoring program. And we've added this year some funds for the implementation of the strategic plan initiatives. Just some of the highlights of the big-ticket items for FY21. We need to renew our science program at the middle school. We need to put some money into middle school and high school social studies programming to begin the process of realigning our programs in social studies with the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So the plan is for next year, for eighth grade, where there'll be a new civics course, and then start the process of pushing it up into ninth grade next year, 10th grade the year before, and after that, and 11th grade the year after that. There is a new state mandate around dyslexia screening that begins next year. We'll do some piloting of some programming this spring, but we need to purchase a testing software essentially to complete that beginning next fall. So we have a budget item for that. You will recall that we bought a new science program for elementary last year. Now we need to replace the consumables from those kits every year, much less than the overall cost of buying the program. This budget is an estimate. We won't know really until after year one if how accurate that is. We're basing it on what we're seeing now. That number could come down in the future. And then there's the strategic plan initiatives piece on the bottom that is cut off, unfortunately of the slide, but that's $75,000. Under professional development, another curriculum department account, we use this for our memberships for Middlesex Partners, Partnerships for Youth, Northeastern, Northeast Professional Educators Network, Matt Saul, which is an ELL affiliation, ASCD. We send teachers to annual conferences. NAFME is our music teachers, Matt Saul's ELL, Cases for Literacy. We pay our TLA consulting costs for the elementary literacy work at the elementary level out of this program. And then other contractual PD costs for administrators that have contractual line items for professional development, as well as summer curriculum development costs. So our ongoing work with TLA is one of the highlights that I pointed out. We're looking to expand that a little bit and bring in some consulting around math instruction, considering the workshop model for math. We always have summer curriculum work in there, so we start to collect proposals in the spring. This work includes some of the mapping work, as well as development of new courses. And then you can see that we're looking for additional funds. So I mentioned the materials for social studies, but we need to pay social studies teachers to do the work of designing the courses. And then we have an ongoing cost for our mentoring program that comes out of that department. The supplies and materials account, much smaller total, just under $20,000. This is where typical office supplies, cost for orientation, which happens every year, any costs associated with our CIT day, our professional development days, whether it be bringing in presenters or buying materials or, you know, refreshments that we have to purchase on those days. Subscription to Teach Point, which is a software that we use to do our evaluations in the district. And you can see some of those called out on the bottom as highlights. And the last two accounts that I'll mention are our system-wide textbook account, which is just under $25,000. Every year, we fund a certain amount of money for each elementary classroom, so teachers can continue to, at the elementary level, continue to add to their classroom libraries to go along with the workshop model. We're looking to add two LLI kits, leveled literacy instruction kits, which is our primary reading delivery mode that we use, K4. We don't have kits for grade five. I don't know why this has been the case for many years, but this budget doesn't finally include the ability to buy a grade-five kit for the north and a grade-five kit for the west, so that we'll have complete LLI kits, K through five, for reading. And the last account is, we have a substitute salaries account that's specifically to cover substitute costs when we're running professional development. This is both when we have TLA consultants come in and also when we are sending out staff members for professional development opportunities related to curriculum instruction.
Thank you. So a little bit of a transition, some kind of stuff, and talking a little bit about programming, but we thought it was important to talk a little bit about, I think, what brings us to where we are in student support at this point. And so we're going to talk a, kind of a little bit about some of the changes that have occurred over the last few years, and talk about specifically, since I've been here, the program additions or changes that we've made, which obviously drives some budget needs and has over the last couple of years. So as we all know, the complexity of all of the students' needs across the board, but particularly in the area of mental health, has been climbing. I think every district is struggling with that, struggling with ways to kind of create systems in place that support students inside the district, whether it's in a special ed capacity or in just in district in general, to meet the mental health needs of all the students. And in terms of how our department, I think, originally started, it started a little bit before I got on board. Originally, this position in the department was specifically special education. Just prior to me coming on board, for whatever reason, but I would suspect it's probably similar to the, as a result of some of the concerns they were seeing in students, they, the previous leadership made the decision to move from special education to student support services, with the idea being, I think, for there to be one hub in the district to support students' needs across the board. The original change, I think, that was also made was adding the behavioral health position, which was me, right, my first year. And then subsequently, we've added a coordinator of special education. And I think the intention behind that was, and certainly now continues to be, the fact that there needs to be more than just a special education hub in the district. There needs to be a place where there's a coordinated approach to mental health, that there's a coordinated approach to things like 504 and some of the other supports, rather than it being kind of a piecemeal being handled at the building level. So I think the work started a little bit before I came on board, but I wanted to talk a little bit about where we are at and what changes we've made in terms of programming and such since then. I just want to bring up kind of our youth risk behavior data, and I bring this up because I think it's concerning, but when you realize that there's actual kids behind these numbers, I think it's scary, to be honest with you. I think when you compare our YRBS data to some of those other districts that participated, we are highest in a number of very concerning categories. And I would say that most of the educators, certainly the clinical staff in the district, and certainly the administrators, would say that they are seeing, if they've been here at least a couple of years, a significant uptick in things like kids, kids being screened psychiatrically and being needing to be placed, having to call in some of the outside professionals to support our students, maybe having them hospitalized. The numbers of those over the last couple of years have been slowly, steadily climbing, and still for the first half of this year, it's actually much higher than we've seen yet so far in the last couple of years, or than I've seen since I've been here. So when we look at numbers like 15% of our students are considering attempting suicide, when seven of them, 7% have actually attempted it, it's scary. Those numbers are scary, that we have students that, 9% of our students that are reporting that they've been involved in sexual violence, right? These are all things that contribute to students being able to be with us, be educated, be engaged, and feel safe, and needs that maybe not every classroom teacher feels like that they can meet either. So I think it's a reality check about where we are in terms of our student population and the needs, and all of the other things that students come to school with, that impacts their ability to access the curriculum and stay focused and kind of do everything we ask them to do on a daily basis. I would say that these, these concerns continue. And I think that, you know, when we talked a little bit, or Dr., Mr. Ragsdale asked the question earlier about what would we do on those half-days if we had them, I would tell you that from my point of view, I feel like we're at a crossroads here. I think the, the needs of the students continue to climb. I think that we haven't necessarily kept pace with professional development to respond to those needs. So I think when we look at how to integrate SEL throughout everybody's classroom, how to develop inclusive practices, not just for our students with disabilities, but for all students, to get what they not need out of being in a classroom, that's where I see those PD days, and I know Dr. Brand talked a little bit about that. But I think in order to really move the needle in terms of what we need from our teachers and what we need to give to our teachers, we have to have a mechanism to do that. And I would say, to be honest with you, from somebody that tries to coordinate a department and have PD, which is very difficult with the structure of the CIT days, I think there needs to be more time, to be honest with you. Otherwise, I feel like we are kind of patching the holes in the boat a little bit, rather than kind of jumping ahead and trying to devote a good chunk of time to things like the D cap, to developing an MTSS structure in the district, to actually doing professional development around UDL with everybody, and teaching them how to support all students in their classroom. I think people do a great job, but I think if you ask them, they would tell you that they feel like they need more support to do that well. So in terms of, I put this in solely because I think it's important for people to remember, and we're going to talk about our data as it relates to students and inclusion, sub-separate and partial inclusion. The data is very clear about students with disabilities. The longer students with disabilities stay connected to inclusion or their typical peers, depending on how you want to frame it, the long-term outlook for those kids is significantly better, from graduation rates, certainly on the MCAS test, but also as it relates to their kind of going to four-year, two- or four-year colleges, as well as whether or not they actually enter the criminal justice system. So the longer you can remain connected to your peers, to inclusion, right, to inclusive settings, the outlook for students is significantly better. And we know that for a fact. Dr. Hare did the review of Massachusetts Special Education Report, which is a phenomenal overview of all of special education in Massachusetts, and the data is crystal clear around that. So we owe it to our kids to make sure that we're doing what we can to keep them connected to inclusion as long as possible. And in some cases, kids do need more, and that's just the reality of it, but we have to do everything we can while they're here, kind of with us, and while they're connected to inclusion. So I'm gonna, we're gonna do kind of the two-slide thing. I apologize for not being able to kind of put up the next couple of slides together, but I don't think there's a good way to do it. So on the left are the, the DESI districts, the districts that Dr. Brand talked about, that DESI identifies. On the right is the town identified. And so this is our rate of full inclusion compared to other districts. So we're similar, on the lower end, but I would say similar, compared to some of our other districts in, in terms of the students that are currently in full inclusion. It is not the same for students that are in partial inclusion. When you compare us to other districts that are surround us or that we are similar to, we are significantly lower, which is extremely concerning. When we go to the next one, which is students that are in sub-separate classrooms or sub-separate settings inside the district, we are significantly higher. For me, while this isn't, you know, wouldn't be necessarily the only reason, I read this data and I say, "Okay, we do okay with the kids that have maybe the ability to access the curriculum with not a ton of support, and we have a lot of sub-separate programs that have been developed." But what we're not doing is taking the kids that have higher needs, that might with some support be able to access partial inclusion, or even a little bit more full inclusion, and the question then becomes, "Why? Why is that existing? Do we not have the resources to support the students in the middle? Do we not have the philosophy necessarily to support the students in the middle?" So there's questions around that, I would say. But I would say that the Walker report also mentioned that, as it relates to our data, the concern that we kind of have extremes in our, in our programming at this point. So again, there are students here who require sub-separate, right? But I would argue that there's probably a good chunk of students with the right supports could access inclusion more. And this is our out-of-district numbers. So little high, middle-ish in terms of the students that we have out of district, depending on the graph that you're looking at. In terms of our, I, we've been doing these, the Walker presentations at the staff, and one of the things I have said to the, the staff, when we talk about the Walker results, we have about a 19.5 eligibility rate in the district. And so when you compare us to other districts that, let's say, DESI identifies, we are significantly higher rate of eligibility compared to those districts. When you look at our eligibility rate, the districts we compare to are districts that have significantly more challenges, and such as Brockton and Fall River. That's who we compare to with our rate of eligibility. It is not who we compare to demographically. When we can look at the demographics, we are much higher, almost two and a half to 3% higher eligibility than student, than other districts that are similar, as a whole. Obviously, it's an average. So what does that bring me to? That brings me to kind of talking about some of the changes that we've made in terms of programming, just in the small amount of time since I've been here. And we really chose to focus on the social-emotional programs because they have been the biggest change in the district. The strides programs and the language-based programs have existed in the district. I think the social-emotional program at the middle school and high school level at one point existed, then it didn't exist, and then it was actually rebooted. The high school one has existed for a long time. But the first program that kind of started, which happened, and I was not responsible for restarting this, but I started right around the same time that, the middle school student support program in August of 2016. In 2017, so a year later, there had been some changes in personnel. We changed the philosophy of a program, of the program a little bit. The program, my first year, which was under a, you know, different administrator's vision, was a combined special ed, regular ed program, which has some challenges to it, to do that well. So right now, it was redesigned in the fall of the following year. It is a special ed program. It was, I think, attempting to serve a multitude of student needs, but that can be challenging. We opened the Stepping Stones program at the Botwell, and you'll see it again a year later at the Shawshing, and then a year later at the West, because those students obviously roll up. The Stages program in about the spring of 2017, again, opened at the north just about a year later. And so the most recent addition is the August of this year's opening of the Bright program. And so I put this in there, this is not a special education program. It's a program for all students at the high school for, that are coming out of hospitalizations. Students that are transitioning back to school following sometimes long-term, sometimes short-term psychiatric placements that require some support in order to kind of get back in the swing of school can vary depending on the student. Sometimes it's just outreach by a social worker to support the student coming back. Sometimes it's actually a place for them to do some work for a little bit, but it is not a special ed or regular ed program. It's open to anybody at the high school.
Okay. You can answer that question, because I've, I'd seen a program like this at a previous convention about how kids who may have been out hospitalized from medical concussions.
Yeah, well, can it also be used for that? That's not the bulk of the students at the moment that are accessing it.
Right. So how many, how many staff do you have in that classroom?
So there's a half-time social worker at the moment, and there is a nurse coordinator, I'm gonna miss, care coordinator, thank you, attached to the program, who has some duties attached to that program, as well as...
Do they overlap in a, in a school day, or how's that work?
Oh, they're here. They're here, both, they're both here in the high school. So both the nursing physician and the coordinator. They may not necessarily, the nursing coordinator is more kind of helping to manage students. She wouldn't be a direct service provider. Yeah. And this is really year zero for the Bright program. So this is the intent of kind of looking at what the needs would be before we allocate potentially more resources to it for a following year.
Sorry, I don't want to. So in a classroom of this sort, how do you, how do you determine what the needs are? Because medically, it's, you know, you can try to plan, but life, life is the one who really drives the boat on that. And it's, I imagine it would be at an ebb and flow kind of situation.
So right now, it's not a classroom, right? You have a social worker that's attached to working with those students to make sure that they're coordinating. Yep, and making sure that they're also doing case management with families and/or outside providers if needed, with the intention of kind of working collaboratively with school staff to make sure the kids entrance. The intention would be, if required, honestly, by the time we look at the data of how many kids access the program, and whether there were kids that really needed more than what we could provide, would be potentially look at and a person to do kind of teaching attached to it for next year.
So, okay, so such as a designated classroom for these kids, like a middle ground that they can come to?
Potentially.
If the regular classroom becomes overwhelming, they can come there to, okay, great.
So it's really not a placement, right?
Right now.
Yeah, well, even, even when it, when it exists, the intention is for this to be a transition program kind of back to students to help them back to enter their regular programming.
Right.
Yeah. And so I think that we're kind of in the, you know, we've got a late start because the positions really didn't get kind of filled and posted till partway into the fall. So I think we'll have a better picture of what we're really looking at for next year come a couple of more months, to be totally honest with you. But at the moment, I would say it's more care coordination, case management, and support by a social worker with, for families, as well as the individual students.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then working together collaboratively with the teachers at the high school to make sure that they're organized and have their work, and like those kinds of things, yeah. Evolutions, I just put up here, evolutions has been around a long time. We added an additional classroom in August of 2018 because we had the number of students climb at the middle school that required some social-emotional programming, and it almost doubled in a couple of years, to be honest with you. So we ended up having to add another classroom teacher. So I just put these up here as kind of a quick map about where we've been at in a very short period of time. So this is just a very quick overview of kind of the programs. The naming is an issue in the district. We have worked on the strides program because the strides program is called three different things across the district. This is just a quick overview of the programming in the district, so that you have an idea. In terms of the Bright program, I, we did kind of put that in here. It's intended to be much shorter term. It wouldn't necessarily be a placement for a student. So I apologize for all the numbers, but we kind of thought this was important to look at because obviously with building those programs, there is resources that have been added. And I know the question of our enrollment dropping and FTEs potentially climbing is something that, you know, we have to be, you know, cognizant of. And so we thought it would be important to put together kind of right now, the snapshot of right now, where we are in terms of how much the program costs us, how much we would estimate it would be if they were to go to a public day school. So this is not private day school estimations. This is solely an average of what it would cost to go to Seam Valley or Lab, okay? Which I think is like sixty-six thousand dollars averaged, if you look at the three of them. So for example, just to read it across the top, if you look at the elementary currently in district, we have twenty-five students in the elementary programming, social-emotional programming at the elementary level. There are twelve staff between educational assistants and teachers. The staff cost is at the top line, one year, and then what it would cost over three years. So the line down is those exact same students, the estimated tuition of what it would cost for one year if those students, if we didn't have the program and those students went out of district, the estimated transportation for one year. The total was, would be the two million one ninety-one, if you added the transportation and the tuition together, and then what those students would cost if they were out for three years. So the thing I want you to think about, though, is if we did not have the elementary programs, those students don't go out for three years. They are out for a long period of time typically if they go out of district. So the three years, I would say, is a very conservative number about potentially what those students would cost over the time that they were out. And so we did the same thing, kind of replicating it down the page, just so you have an idea of what we're looking at. When you look at the overall numbers, it's actually staggering in terms of what the, I got it, yeah, what we would be looking at. We'd be looking at an increase. Now, not all these students necessarily would go out of district. I would say that most of them, in fact, probably would if we didn't have these programs. There might be a few who, you know, didn't, or for whatever reason, didn't want to do that, or might be successful in another way, or with additional, different support. But you're looking between a one-year cost of five million and a three-year of about fifteen for those students. And so while I know that, you know, we have to expend resources, the benefit that we're getting for certainly us financially is important, but the benefit that most of these kids are getting by being here with their peers in their home schools, I think is much more important. If we were to take it one step further and look at private day schools, the numbers would almost double because the tuition on them is about forty-five to fifty percent more minimally. Most of them are almost double what a day school, public day school tuition would be.
If I can just add, Alice, and thank you for taking us through that. So the point in the presentation here, again, as Alice said, is to try and provide an overview of the good work, first off, that has, has transpired over time. Much, not all, but much under Alice's leadership. And the ongoing efforts that in the district have, have and do continue to evolve in terms of how to right-size and ensure that there's the right level of support for these programs. And Alice, as Alice just mentioned, it's not lost upon, it's not lost upon me that overarching our conversation here tonight is the fact that enrollment's slowly declining. But right alongside that, and Alice is going to get into this in a moment, is respectively pointing towards new staff positions that are part of this budget package that is maybe for you to consider. And I, we try to lay out the storyline to, to ensure that, and this slide, thanks to Paul and Alice who worked on developing this, I just want to point out for members of the community who may be taking a look at this or the committee, even though these, these titles say estimates, they are real numbers here in terms of what we know to be the case, that we have lots of student, we have lots of data on the types of programs that we're referencing. And so I wouldn't want, I would not want a member of the community to take a look at these and suggest that we just sort of are rolling together a number to, to make it look inflated. It's not. They are real, and it points to the bottom line here in terms of, from a financial aspect, why this work and this commitment makes good sense. And Alice is going to talk about the new positions that are part of this budget proposal that are before you, many of which do center around student support services and us continuing to try and be responsive to meeting the needs of our students.
So in terms of the positions that are being added, interestingly enough, while we all, we have felt like that some of these positions have been needed, they were also captured in the Walker report that was done, in terms of the needs of the district. So in terms of our current team chairperson role, there are four team chairpeople for all the schools, plus about sixty-five out-of-district students. So those that, let's say, have the larger schools, like the high school, will have just the high school alone and share probably about a third of the out-of-district caseload. Middle school, same thing. And then the two remaining team chairs have three schools apiece, plus an out-of-district caseload. If we compare ours to surrounding districts of similar size, they have six to seven team chairpeople on district for the same, on staff, excuse me, for the same amount of students approximately, let's say Tewksbury. They're similar in terms of size and organization of schools, interestingly enough. And so Walker report did recommend adding one, and it's going to do a number of things at the district level. So currently, we have inconsistency in terms of who's running special education meetings. So for example, just purely because of numbers. So team chairs run all out-of-district cases. But for example, at one elementary school, you may have a team chair running students that are in programs, and you may have a school psychologist running the meetings for the students that are also in the school. And the other side of town, it could be a school counselor who's running the meeting, and a team chair that runs certain programs inside that building. At the middle school, there are special ed teachers that run some of the eligibility meetings with team chairs running other, and it's purely a volume issue in terms of them not being able to do all of them. An ideal place, we would have all of the team chairpeople being responsible for any eligibility meeting. So initial and reevaluation meeting. It creates consistency in terms of the understanding of the special ed process, and also just, it's easier frankly for the staff to know who is the go-to person. So there's no kind of lag time in terms of communication because that can impact compliance. So if we add a team chair, it gives us the ability also to have greater oversight and have one person dedicated to working on the out-of-district students, which is a very unique skill to have because you use a lot of driving. There's also lots of different people that you are interacting with, and the programs are very different from program to program. So it would be beneficial for us to have one person that would be responsible for that. So we're going to have to look a little bit at the assignments, but we did put in one, for proposal one, team chair for next year. BCBA's are similar. We currently have two BCBA's for the entire district. And given our size, we actually have a lot of programming that not a lot of districts of our size have. So we've got social-emotional programs pre-K through twelve. We've got programs for students with autism, pre-K through twelve. We have language-based programs for students, K, one through twelve, as well as students that are in, you know, gen ed that require support from a BCBA. And so we currently have two for the whole district, which is very low. And so I think that, you know, ultimately, I think people are yearning for the support from a BCBA inside certainly the programs, which they receive now, but outside the programs in your inclusion classrooms, and just really looking for more support from people whose really sole focus and expertise is behavior. And so the hope is by adding one more person, it gives us the ability to do a little bit more of supporting kids at the tier one, two level, which has been a challenge, to be honest with you, at this point in doing that because of their numbers. The Walker report also talked about, as we have as well as a staff, about the need for an inclusion teacher, an additional inclusion teacher at the middle school. We want to make sure that we are providing all of our students with high-quality special education programming and not supplanting that for access to an educational assistant, who they're wonderful, but they're not, it's not the same level of expertise. And so doing this will enable us to make sure there's more equity in terms of the services that students receive at the middle school. Mr. Phillips and his staff also recognized the mental health needs at the middle school and put forth a recommendation for a social worker, which I think is extremely important at the middle school as well. I think the age of middle school is in itself challenging. I think you couple that with having students, our students, and I think a lot of kids this age that are struggling with some mental health anxiety and difficulties, kind of just navigating their world. I think that there needs to be, given the numbers of psychiatric screenings we're seeing, as well as the number of students that are entering our social-emotional programs at the middle school level, additional clinical support to support all those students in the building, not just the programming students. We also, just based on the need for some of these positions based on programs and individual student needs, have educational assistance. Some are driven by the complex needs of some of our little guys that are aging out of early intervention into the preschool that have very complex needs, and that require more, honestly, in some cases, just the safety of having another adult with them throughout the course of the day to make sure that they are safe and able to access their programming. Most of these are actually at the very early childhood level, and a couple are for compliance-related 504. One is related for a 504 issue. The clerical support at the Student Support Services is actually a shift from a grant that was utilized in nursing, in the nursing department. And so the grant ended, and so we've rolled that clerical support into the budget, but that individual supports Dorian Grow and her work in the office. Let me mention the reading specialist.
Give Alice a break for a minute. Reading is listed up here, but it's a general education ad, so we have much higher enrollment at the Wildwood than we do for much higher. We have a higher enrollment at the Wildwood than at the Butwell. And both schools currently have a point seven-five reading specialist. It just doesn't make sense, so we would bring the Wildwood reading specialist to a one-point-oh so we can offer the same amount or similar amount of reading intervention in both buildings, which is just currently not possible right now with the FTE levels that we have.
That's Ken.
Glad I could help.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll shift to Office of Information Technology. This is a list of the overall accounts. I'll just give you a brief what these cover. The Instructional Technology account covers a wide variety of license renewals, firewall renewals, our internet bandwidth is covered in this, this account, some software licensing for software renewals and maintenance agreements, and all of that's in the Instructional Technology account. The Computer Purchase account is used to pay for some archiving. It also purchases the Chromebooks that we supply to free reduced-lunch students, and then it also holds a sum of money for any kind of special projects or system outages that we need to address. Beyond that, the telephone budget, obviously, covers telephones. Cell phones cover cell phones. And then the Maintenance and Repair account is the bulk of our parts and supplies for various maintenance that we do throughout the year, replacement of various things. It also covers our soft right financial system and a few other things such as that. The last account, the last two accounts, Safety and Safety Communication System covers our website and our Blackboard phone call system that places the automated phone calls. And Data Processing Supplies covers some licensing agreements. That's kind of the overall run of what those accounts cover. What I really wanted to talk about is mostly involved in our capital requests. So we did an extensive inventory this summer of our teacher laptops, and we're proposing replacing all of the teacher laptops at the high school, the Shawshing, the Woodburn Street, the Butwell, and the Wildwood, along with a small number of administrative laptops. Just as a note, we did the teacher laptops at the middle school, North and West, this past summer. It was almost about the same model, not to do. The chart at the bottom shows, it's cut off a little bit there, but shows the number of devices by the year they were purchased across the district, and shows the total, green being in the first four years of use, yellow being in the fifth and sixth year, and red is beyond that. Laptops, when they get into the yellow range, are starting to fail because they're, you know, the screens, batteries, keyboards, things, because they do get a lot of use, use and movement back and forth. So that's where they tend to focus on that. So you'll see the high school, those were purchased before they actually moved into the building. They were purchased the year before and brought with them into the new building. So those are primarily being aged ago. Next slide shows the desktop replacement. We're actually only proposing to replace seven physical desktops in the capital budget, but we are planning to upgrade a large number of our desktops to Windows 10, or Windows 7. We've already begun that process here in the high school, primarily the labs. We're starting to build a template to roll those out, to upgrade those, and replace those, to get those up to a new operating system that's fully supported by Microsoft. Chromebook replacement schedule, this, this kind of is a reverse chart. So the, Google will support upgrading the operating system on a Chromebook for approximately five years. Depends on the model you buy and how Google classifies it. Once they get beyond their support agreement, they run the risk of not being able to use for MCAS support because they have to be on one of the latest operating systems. So for instance, this 2019 group down the bottom, we're still able to use these this year, but likely not next year for MCAS testing. So in 2020, we have a large bulk of Chromebooks that need to be replaced, three hundred and twenty-one of those. This will do two things for us. One, it's going to allow us to replace these Chromebooks across the district that are used in carts and classrooms to maintain their ability to do our online MCAS testing, but it's also going to increase the quantity of Chromebooks that we have for classroom use. So even though these, some of these Chromebooks won't be able to use for MCAS testing, they're still usable for various other things in classrooms because that, that version of the software is important for most of those things. So we are proposing to replace about three hundred, over three hundred of them this summer. Projector replacements is another large budget item that we carry. This summer, we did the projectors at the middle school. These are the classroom projectors. They were pole-mounted, so they were up in towards the front third of the classroom with the projector shining to the whiteboard. They were placed with wall-mounted with a speaker system, a much better system. The year before, we did the North and the West. And then you'll see down, over the years, in the past, some have been replaced at the elementary schools. But those ones in the red are quite old pole-mounted projectors that are beginning to fail. They're dim, they're not very, they're not very bright at all. So we're proposing to replace about half of those this summer, and then the capital plan would potentially request another half of those in the following year. One of the biggest areas that, not the biggest in cost, but the largest areas I think with the most impact would be that we're requesting an additional computer technician for the department. We're currently staffed with a network administrator and two computer technicians who really do the frontline support for all of the break-fix in all the classrooms. Having just two computer technicians forces us to use the network administrator, probably eighty-plus to ninety. 80-plus to 90% of his time just on break-fix when ticket stuff. So he's not able to address networks, networking systems. He's not able to patch systems, monitor systems, check backups, all of that kind of stuff. So there's a serious deficiency in our ability to be prepared for potential cybersecurity issues as well as just to maintain our network. So really, very often in a, quite a reactionary mode when something happens and we're not able to do the proper monitoring. An additional computer technician will increase our speed and ability to address tickets in the classroom, as well as free the network administrator up to do what a network administrator should be doing. We currently operate about 275 PCs to one technician. We should be about 200 to one, and that doesn't include the plethora of Chromebooks we have, projectors, and everything else that we do. That's about it on that, and we're back to personal statements.
Okay, thank you. For me, so we have up here is a slide just to show the changes in FTEs from our FY20 budget to our FY21 budget. This slide is exactly the same as what you saw in December, and we've discussed all of these changes through the Department of Students Support Services and the Office of Information Technology. As we had mentioned, this budget includes an increase of 11.25 new FTEs. We've spoken about the roles and the positions already, with the exception of 1.6 FTEs. All the rest are in Student Support Services, and we can add that the .6 is part of the nursing, which is part of Student Support Services, so. As we look at salary changes, there's a lot of numbers up here, and I don't apologize for the numbers, by the way. But at the very top, you see our FY20 salary budget was $32.8 million. The changes in then, on the superintendent's preliminary FY21 budget showed $34.5, $5.6 million, or a 5.43% increase. Back in December, as a previous slide had shown, the superintendent, assistant superintendent and I met with the town manager and the finance director to go over this budget, and it was a very productive meeting, and as we had to make some changes to the budget to come up with the percentage you'll see in a minute, we made some changes to salary. Essentially, it was mainly retirement-related. We have approximately 21 retirements at the end of this fiscal year, which is significantly higher than we've seen in the last few years. So obviously, there's a savings there that allowed us really to add some of the FTEs that we have added that you've seen. And then the replacement reduction line, that small change, we had, from December to now, we had a couple of positions filled and so forth. So at the very bottom, revised salary, that just shows the changes, stepping lanes, $508,000, new positions, and so forth and so on. So our salary change from FY20 to FY21 is a $1.6 million increase, or about 4.9%. So that's our salary budget. For non-salary, it's going to be a couple slides. So here is what you saw in December. FY20 budget for non-salarious, $9.1 million. These were the changes budget to budget to arrive at the superintendent's preliminary budget of $9.4 million roughly, or a 2.6% increase. Again, through our meeting with the town manager, although you can't see all these numbers, some changes we had to make is on the right-hand side. Special education tuition and other, about a reduction of $71,000. Curriculum and curriculum supplies is an increase of 33, a little over $33,000. That's an increase compared to what you saw in December. Technology, we reduced the technology budget by a little over $48,000. Maintenance repairs, reduced it by about $7,000. You see this consultant line, which is new, that includes a couple of items. One, as I mentioned, we have a new financial system, and we are using a consultant to help us through the process. The town and the schools are splitting the cost of this consultant, so there's about $20,000 of that $35,000, and there's about $15,000 that's related to PBIS that we incorporated into the budget. Other changes, there's a minor change of $1,000. So from December to now, we reduced the non-salary budget by a little over $58,000. So back over to the left, a total revised change budget to budget, it's about $175,000 increase, or a $9.3 million total, or 1.9% increase budget to budget. So as a summary, up the top, we show what the preliminary budget back in December. If I just look at the total line, we had an increase of about $2 million, a little over $2 million, a 4.80%. The changes that have been made between then and now, we talked about these numbers, about a $231,000 reduction. And at the bottom, the superintendent's recommended budget is $43,722,036, or an increase over the FY20 approved budget of $1,782,433, a 4.25%. As we showed the last time, even though we did add many of these positions, there were other positions that were requested that, just given where we were in the budget and so forth, that we had to defer these requests, and they'll be revisited in the future. So these positions are not included in the recommended budget. The capital improvement, our capital budget planning, so this process starts in roughly October. The town will send us a request, a documentation to create a five-year capital plan, which we will put together and submit to them in early November. And then we presented that to the, you know, the school committee in December. After that meeting in December, as we mentioned, we met with the town, we had to make some revisions to that, and we'll show you that in a second. So if we look at this slide again, this is what our original submission was, and again, the categories and bottom line, we had requested in December, $781,000 worth of capital projects through the town, 511 and so forth, for years going out to FY25. This slide, a little bit different, you'll see the red numbers, those were, those are the new numbers that we have in our capital budget. Just the red, $80,000 FY21. In our original submission, that was $160,000, so we reduced it by 80 and moved 80 to FY22. And we had worked in collaboration with, with Mr. Ward as far as prioritizing, so we essentially moved $80,000 from FY21 to FY20. The next number in red, the File Server System Replacement, we just moved $60,000 from FY22 to FY23. Moving down, there's a PA System Upgrade, we moved $70,000 from FY21 to FY22. And Grade One, the third from the last line, Grade One Wiring Upgrade, we moved $80,000 from FY22 to FY24. So these numbers were more in line with kind of what the town was looking for, asked us if we could do. So our bottom line is 631 for FY, 631,000 for FY21, 521,000 for FY22, and so forth. So this is sitting with the town. We, you know, based on our discussions with them, we were able to reduce our capital budget, move funds around just to help them with their, with the whole town's budgeting process.
Thank you, Paul. Just two more slides to conclude. There's an awful lot of focus, of course, throughout this presentation on a number of areas that are emerging for priorities for us, as well as, as well as obviously operating our programs and services that we are required to. I think it's always important to point out for certainly at least the community that there are, in the background, there are a number of other areas, and this is only a short list of many, that arguably in some way, shape, or form represent unfunded mandates of some sort. That is to say, work, time, energy, and the like, to try and dedicate towards things that there's not necessarily a budget line for, or funds outright to support. And so the work of organizing a school district and the programs and services, some of which really have just been highlighted here tonight, obviously spans much deeper and broader, and this just touches upon some of those things. Hopefully, this evening, sorry, this evening, you've come away with a sense of, really, the breadth of attention that collectively as a team has been paid towards developing this budget. It was not meant to overwhelm you or members of the community, but to try and provide a little bit of insight in terms of the critical thinking that goes towards trying to piece together what is a little over $43 million, of which, obviously, ultimately, at the end of the day, we seek the town and taxpayer's support to continue the good programs and services that we have here in Wilmington. There are, there are a number of steps along the way towards the conclusion of this budget process, of which we really sort of still somewhat, for the most part, in the, in the middle of, and although a lot of the heavy lifting has, has been done in the background and that was spotlighted in the presentation tonight, we have a number of different budget presentations and conversations still to come, and this slide attempts to try and highlight some of those, including Town Manager Presentation of the Budget, Board of Select, to the Board of Selectmen. The budget hearing is scheduled for February the 12th here in this room, and that's obviously the third and, for the most part, anticipated final formal conversation with the school committee, in which we'll obviously deliver really a recap of where we're at, and it follows through until June when the final budget is put into place. I want to again thank the members of the administrative team for all of their work and the many, many hours that have gone into this, this work to get us to this point. The town, I've said many, many occasions, is, we are in a great place, thanks to the leadership of Paul, but, but also just the, the strong working relationship that we have and the partnership with the town. That does not always exist in all places, but it's certainly a great place to be in recognition of that. And with that, we're happy to try and take any questions you may have, or not.
So I just had a quick question. I know the other ones, I, no more curiosity questions, but I was curious, I saw in the, as it pertained to the unfunded and underfunded mandates, you have the Student Opportunity Act listed in there, and I thought that a bit odd since it's kind of, and I didn't know, and I didn't want to assume if it pertained to the time involved in doing the report as to how the, what monies we are getting are going to be expended. I didn't know why it appeared in those more familiar, known, underfunded and unfunded.
Well, yeah, it's a great question, and I, and perhaps it shouldn't have been in there, but at the same time, I think that what, what we don't know is the work that's going to be involved in completing all of the, the respective planning and documentation for that, the outreach with the community, what that looks like. And so it's, there's, maybe it should have had question marks beside it because at this very juncture, still to this point, unless an email's come in today, there is not clarity around what that's going to entail for you as a committee, us as an administration, in terms of weaving that work together and submission. So it's still questions of what's to come.
So what the, what the Department of Ed is dictating that districts report back to them on is still not clarified, although it's due April 1st?
That's correct.
Wow.
Yep.
Nothing like efficiency, huh? Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Mr. Bjork.
I'll just offer a comment. This is, this was certainly, in my six years, probably the most thorough presentation that we've received. It certainly answered the, more and more questions than I could come up with. And I'd just say, I know, I mean, I'm used to, every year we see the budget that we would ideally like to see, and then we see the changes that we have to make in order to, to accommodate the, the revenues that are available. And as a parent of children in the school, I really liked that first one. And as somebody who's representing the taxpayers, I understand why we have to look at the second one, but it's always, it's always a little disappointing to see that the, the things that we have to put off for another time. But I really, tremendous credit to the attention given to student services. I think that that is, that's an area that we've been really, really making progress and strides on my entire time I've been on the board, and I think we're heading in the right direction there.
Thank you. Mr. Raxdale.
Wanted to just go back to slide 18 for a minute, which lays out some of the strategic objectives. This is back in the section talking about the strategic plan and, and looking for the places where that, where that gets, gets developed. In the technology integration, there are actually two things on technology here. The integration ensuring that it's strategically developed to support learning in the classroom and incorporating technology that is forward-thinking, adaptive, responsive to students and staff. I was wondering if we can just sort of like talk about in the Information Technology budget where we think that we're pushing this forward, or like where, I mean, I can see some places, but I'd just like to have a little thought on where we're putting money towards those objectives.
I'll certainly turn over to Ken, but just to say, at the outset, that you recall that with Ken's leadership, work is underway around developing a new technology plan. And so that points to, and points us collectively, beyond just the hardware and/or software in place, but also where that work is, is certainly headed. So with Ken.
Certainly. So what I've learned in my short time here is that we've really have needed to focus on our infrastructure to start. We've had some significant deficiencies in our placement schedule and the infrastructure to be able to support the learning in the classroom. So if the teachers don't have the appropriate quantity of equipment and working equipment, as well as the proper support to maintain and keep it going, we can't move forward with, with integrating more technology into the curriculum in a reliable way. So that's where we're addressing it now, and as Dr. Brand alluded to, we are probably 50 to 60% of the way through the process of creating a new technology plan, which will outline a new five-year capital plan and readjust the priorities out there, and I think those will address those strategic plan initiatives.
I also wanted to comment in the, this is, I think, mentioned on slide 22, that in the textbook system, I said this is the top, textbooks, classroom libraries, and testing materials, that it's, I think it's really gratifying to see the increase in funding for the classroom libraries, because with, you know, with such an emphasis on the reading model and on the reader's workshop, that we're using that's such a key part of the model that we're using for literacy instruction, and that, you know, this is, so this is the type of thing that, you know, teachers reach into their own pockets to, you know, be able to add books and increase the value of that, of that library. And so I think that this is a, an excellent addition to further support that literacy work.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you. I think this was, I agree with Mr. Bjork that this is the most comprehensive budget presentation I've seen, and so many of the questions I had written as we were talking through it, I'm going, oh, okay, got that, check, check. So, so we are really grateful for the time and energy you put into this very long slideshow. Because I found every slide was riveting, and it was actually, and I found that it really helped us to think through, other than just looking at the chart with all the numbers and we're going, okay, looks good, and you're checking it all, you know, not really knowing exactly why we're doing that, but trusting, and I think this we trust, but now we also are able to hear why we're spending the money and where we're doing it. So I think it's exciting. So thank you so much. We appreciate all the time and energy.
Say thank you to all the principals and assistant principals and administrators for being here and for all the work on, on this process. Thank you.
Very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I feel like we should applaud almost. I'm like, hey, we should, we should really applaud.
Definitely.
We should, we should applaud. Moving right along, we are moving to 7C, which is Superintendent Midsey, Cico Golez, Dr. Brandt.
Thank you. So I do not, I thought you'd be slide-presented out, so I don't have a slide presentation tonight.[1799.66]
tonight, but I will draw your attention to a document, a one-page document in the Google folder entitled 7C Superintendent Mid-Cycle Goals. And so, this really is intended to be brief, but just with the commitment made at the beginning of the year in terms of providing you as a school committee with an update, a bit of an insight in terms of some of the work that I've been doing to date, some behind-the-scenes, some not-so-behind-the-scenes in terms of working towards, hopefully, some great progress by the end of the year on these respective goals. And so, in that document, and thank you for some of the feedback that was received in terms of its readability and ease to try and track along the left-hand side of that document, hopefully, you can see the respective goal type, and then moving from the left to the right, area of focus and anticipated outcome. So, all of that is information that you have seen previously, when at the beginning of the year you approved these goals. The far right-hand column, Actions to Date, is information that you haven't seen thus far, and if I may, I'll just briefly touch upon some of the work in the respective areas. So, the professional practice goal, attend one staff meeting each of our school facilities and attend one department meeting for each department. And so, I'm pleased to say I'm making progress along the way. On few occasions, there are some that have been scheduled, that another conflict came up that may have prevented me from getting there, but I have to say, it's yet another opportunity, outside of the whole goal aspect, to just to be a part of our schools and the discussions that are unfolding and/or the departments, and great to continue to learn, of course, as I need to around the work that's going on throughout the district. And so, you can see highlighted there, the meetings thus far, and there's a slew more of them that are planned in the coming months. Student Learning Goal, the second lead, this is directly from the strategic plan, so you'll see that notation there. The Development and Formation of the Action for Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Committee. And you can see the actions to date. I'll pause on this to say that nothing specific to this, the launch of this committee has yet unfolded, but I will say alongside that, that we have, since the development or since the presentation of these goals to you, there have been two sort of side-related pieces, if you will, that have also unfolded in terms of the body of work. We have a team that has been participating, and the next session is actually tomorrow, the Inclusive Practices Course, provided by the Department of Education, of which you might recall, we have a team attending that. And then, we've also had a team that's been active in some MTSS-focused work. There's some overlap for these, and if you were to see the whole plan, the strategic plan as was presented to you, there's some overlap in some areas there. And so, it's, to this point, really kind of trying to map out where we go as it relates to the launch of this work. But I will say, with all of that said, there still is the intention around launching this committee. If you did take a look at the strategic plan, it really talks about getting the committee up and running, formed, up and running, and really charting the course for where this work is going to go. District Improvement Goal Number One, the third down from the top, is working collaboratively with the School Committee and Town Entities around our facilities and student support services. We have had, I'm not even sure the exact number of meetings, but quite a few, with Dr. Regan and Mr. Roggerio and myself, with the Town Manager and with Mr. Hooper around this very topic. And in fact, the most recent was last week. And I'm very optimistic about the direction that we're heading with this. More information to share here, but certainly, I think we're on a very good path. I will remind the committee and the community that the commitment to put forth applications for MSBA for all six elementary schools is a commitment that this body took, along with the Selectmen. Nothing has changed our course on that. The official portal, that's actually, I think, what they call it for MSBA, opened up. I signed up and now have an account, and that will allow us in to start the work around marching towards submitting those MSBA applications later in the spring. So, of course, keep you updated on that. District Improvement Goal Number Two, Superintendent's Advisory Council, to facilitate two-way communication between myself and the staff. That is up and running, in fact, earlier this afternoon, I had the second meeting with that group, and I'm pleased to be able to say we have active participation, and it's early, in its early stages, but what was really great to experience today is staff coming forth with questions or areas of curiosity that they had or their colleagues who they were representing had, and that was really the heart of this one, to really try and foster two-way communication. It's not intended to just be another opportunity for the superintendent to share information around business that might be flowing through the School Committee, otherwise, it's really about two-way communication, and I'm really pleased that it seems to be heading in that direction. District Improvement Goal Number Three, the template around a report of sorts. That is underway right now, and you will see the content of that that will be included in the town report. That's something that many of you are aware, the School Department is one of the departments, has to provide, and so, the requests have gone out for all that information, and I've started the process of pulling that together. And I'm going to use that opportunity to generate this report to the community that will be a little more glossy and hopefully readable. Those town reports tend to be a little bit, well, I don't know what the word is, but a little bit, I don't have a word.
Dry?
A little dry. So, the effort is to try and turn that, yeah, I was waiting for somebody to chime in. Instructional Leadership, moving on down, the Extended Leadership Team Meetings to Engage in Educator Observation and Evaluation, still ongoing at this juncture, not any specifics really to report. Management Operations, Social and Emotional Well-Being, Start Time Committee is in reference to that. That group is up and running, and I'll bring to your attention the intention around having the committee provide an update to the School Committee in the second meeting in February. Community Stakeholder Engagement, under Number Three. Intra-School Council is up and running. In fact, I had the second meeting of that last week as well, and also very pleased at where that's at, and hopefully, that continues to grow. And then finally, no, that is finally, that's the last, the other ones that were there originally were put on hold. Happy to take any questions if you have about any of that work.
Questions, comments?
I just had to say, I just really do appreciate how you formatted your actions to date and the goals that, the current goals that we did agree to. I just, I'm one of those who are very happy to see it, and it just makes it so clear to see, and I think this is going to be the first year that I can actually tie the actions to date and your goals to other examples that have transpired that may not have been mentioned here, that are reactions from these actions. So, and that's what I think I truly appreciate, appreciate most of all.
Well, thank you for that, and I will say, I may have said it before, but I also, in the background, am and will continue to gather respective evidence or appropriate evidence to try and, and collecting that, dare I say, in a Google folder that I'll share with you as we get a little bit further in the year. I recognize that it's really tough for you to think back to all of this work, and so, to the degree that I can put together any information, not just about these goals, I'm mindful of, I have to get better at that, because it would be a daily thing, and so, there's a balance there, but I do want you to know that I'll provide you with that as we get a little bit further along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, that brings us to 7D, the First Reading of Revised Policies, DA through DIE. I'm going to start with DA. And Mrs. Burns, I have, I do have your questions available as well, if you'd like, you know, read it.
Give me just a...
Because I know you've got a lot, you've got that.
Sorry.
Taking the notes.
Just find the right place in the...
Your, you recommended keeping the language in accordance with all applicable statutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I was just...
And then you asked me if it was, was it recommended by MASC, and I said, yeah, that was not in the MASC policy handbook, so we removed it only because it wasn't there.
Right. I do think, though, what, it adds clarity to someone looking and searching, well, why, it adds further clarity that this comes from state statute as opposed to something, you know, I think it just adds additional clarity that can't hurt can only help, especially if you're not familiar, you're not familiar with it, that they can reference the law pertaining to it, and, you know, it's a pathway to additional clarity, but it's, anytime that it's specific to a state statute, I think is only helpful in someone searching out the policy to find out the rationale behind it and apply it to whatever it may, you know, whatever it is that they need to apply it to. I don't know, that's just, I'm not explaining it as well as I think I'd like to, but...
No, it's helpful, thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone have anything to add or disagree with keeping in accordance with all applicable statutes?
If we kept that language in there, would there also need to be a reference to the applicable statutes, sort of as on the bottom is the source is MASC, but would we also want to add what the applicable statutes are as well? Just a question.
That seems like a very good question. So, well, I cannot answer that. My answer is tentatively yes, but I don't know what those statutes are, so I would need to, we'd need to bring that back to the committee and look through that. So, we'll hold on DA. And move on to DB. I did not receive any comments or questions about this, so I'll keep moving unless someone has something that they didn't send ahead of time. Okay. So, DB looks good. That brings us to DBC, Budget Deadlines and Schedules. And I did receive some comments on this. Mrs. Burns, do you mind if I read this?
No, please go ahead.
What was the thought around removing Town Charter language? It adds to the clarification as it pertains to our budget schedule and is specific to how we do it. It's a helpful resource for anyone interested in our processes, and you'd like to keep it.
I just, I guess my rationale is, I, if it was just for, I think, it's important detail, again, it's another reference, anyone seeking out that policy with regards to where we fall in the budget schedule and cycle, I think is helpful and can further lead someone on to researching the Town Charter, if that's the case, if there's something, you know, I don't know, I'm just, you know, speculating a reason for someone to inquire. I just think it's another level of understanding and seeking out alternative...
Does anyone have a problem with keeping?
Isn't that covered in the, and the annual town meeting is referenced in the next sentence as what we're working backwards from, saying two weeks or, two weeks or more before the annual town meeting.
Are you just referring to the legal reference at the bottom?
I suppose so.
I think that's how I read it, that you wanted to not have that striked, but I could be wrong.
I'm assuming that the strike portions are the ones that are referenced in the Town Charter. Although I don't see any, not against the last, second to last paragraph, although, you know, again, that's, I guess, a part of the Town Charter, because the Selectmen really kind of dictate it. My other question is, though, too, is that, I know that there was, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I know I'm not, I'm not thinking as sharp as I like. There's some discussion about changing town meeting as opposed to the Saturday to a weekend night. I don't know what the status of that is. That would create another change in the charter if the town does decide to move in that capacity for future town meetings. I don't, I don't know.
There's been talk of that for years.
Yeah, well, no, I know, I just, but it does keep being brought up, and the conversation kind of keeps inching forward. I don't, I guess I'm just...
So, why don't I actually, why don't I go back? We'll look through the Town Charter and then we'll bring this back for first reading next time. Does that sound okay? Mr. Raxdale?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, no worries. Okay, and that was, I'm sorry, that was DBC.
Correct.
Okay. DBD, Budget Planning. I did not receive any comments on this one. Anyone have any questions? Okay, moving along. Brings us to DBG. Which I'm not seeing. Sorry. I'm not seeing it here under First Read, so I'm just trying to be careful.
DBE?
DBG.
Yeah, DBG is the next one in the packet.
It's missing. It is the next one in the packet, but it seems to be missing from here. So, I think we'll have to hold on that?
Yes.
Missing from the agenda.
I think you rightly proceed to DBJ.
Okay.
That is two policies forward.
So, DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority. And there were some questions on that. So, you want, oh, do you want to, you got this one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I know that there was a change of wording, the committee wishes to be kept. I like shall, because wishes seems to me, in my interpretation and reading it, as optional, you know, that we wish, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, whereas shall is more objective in the sense that we, we want to see it. And that's why I, I would like to see shall remain, and I think wishes can be misconstrued for that purpose, and because it's clearly a jurisdiction that falls under School Committee, I think it also emphasizes the role we play and the responsibility we play within it.
Well, it's, when I read that comment, I actually wondered if it shouldn't just say the committee should be kept abreast of the need for these adjustments. Maybe that's a bit more clear?
Well, should, you said should?
Should.
Should.
Well, it's, no, but should is still optional.
Agreed.
So, is shall is more...
So, the committee will be? How about will?
Should be shall and will, if we indicate just for MASC.
It was MASC.
Yep.
Was it MASC? Yeah, it must have been MASC, because I can't, all right, so just keep it with shall? Shall be kept?
I have no objection.
Any disagreements? We're good? Okay. Do you have that, Mrs. Burns, in your notes? This is going to be an interesting...
Sorry.
No, it's going to be an interesting transfer back, because we're going to have to make the corrections. Brings us to DD, Funding Proposals and Applications. There was a question on that.
Yeah, the wishes was the MASC language, that's where that came from.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You'd like to keep their designee.
I thought I'd like to ask the question as to the significance, and I know in past experiences, and, you know, everything changes, so I, it's a question, I guess, if designee should be kept or not. I know previously that the proposals and applications come from a variety of sources. I know Paul has done some, I know staff seek out grants and other resources to supplement, and I just didn't know if that was a, as opposed to just putting it all on the superintendent per se, although, I mean, of course, the, you know, the trained conductor in that, but I just don't, again, I don't know if I'm interpreting, if I'm interpreting it correctly. I just thought I'd throw that out for clarification, I guess.
Sure.
I think this was the MASC language, and I think that we felt in the committee that it just kind of made it a little bit cleaner and that there was nothing in particular lost from it. I mean, the superintendent can obviously designate any staff to pursue and keep abreast of these types of opportunities.
So, it just doesn't need to be specified, then?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of like in, I don't know, we could probably find dozens of these policies in which you could write, or, you know, when the superintendent's responsibilities are described, where you could also write or designate, and it seems probably unnecessary in some of those cases.
It's not a big thing, I just asked for...
Any other thoughts on it? Okay, so are you, Mrs. Burns, are you okay with the strike?
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm indifferent, but I was just curious, that's two... Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm indifferent, but I was just curious as to the role it plays, I guess, in the language. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, we are D F D, which is Gate Receipts. I didn't receive any comments on that. Any questions? D G A is Authorized Signatures. I did get something on that.
I wonder from whom?
I don't know. And so the comment, since payroll is the largest part of our budget and the responsibility of all members, I'd like to recommend the language to change up to four members, including the chair, needed to sign payroll warrants, or no less than three signatures required.
That was fine.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Agirre, do you have thoughts on that? Because.
I think it, right now, we have two signatures required. It would require school committee members to really to come into the Roman House every other week to sign the payroll warrants. I think that's why we had two and the town accepted two signatures on that, so it would just require, and we're fine with it, but there'd have to be a concerted effort of the school committee to, you know, to come into the Roman House and to sign those, because of those are religiously, you know, every two weeks, just payroll.
We're there fairly frequent for warrants typically, because I, I mean, I remember signing payrolls in conjunction when we're there. I don't, if the town accepts two, then, I mean, just so that there's a, I think, balance, because I think it's everybody's role to stay, you know, payroll's not as big as, I think, the warrants and the expenditures and that, but I don't, I was just a, just expanding it so, you know, for transparency and accountability, because all members, you know, it is a part, it's the largest part of our budget. So that was kind of the thought process in making that recommendation. I don't think the number, I'm not tied into a number, but I thought more than one maybe offer more oversight, accountability of members, membership, the board member, so.
Other thoughts? I don't think, I actually think getting people in there to sign is, can be problematic.
I agree.
Is my understanding?
I mean, I try to, if I may, I try to bring them to school committee members' meetings, but if the meetings are an off week, then payroll, that's a different issue, and then we don't have another meeting for three weeks, you know, the February 12th, so you have those, and you'll probably be getting an email tomorrow for a bunch of accounts payable warrants that will need signatures as well, so, I mean, we can live either way.
We still approve it in our meeting, I mean, either way, we're a pro for seeing it in that way, we're approving it.
Well, but you're not, you're approving it blindly, I guess, is what, you know what I mean, as opposed, you know, it's, I mean, it's not a.
You don't have to, though.
I mean, I appreciate the point about it being like the most significant part of our budget, that this is, you know, where, where most of the money goes. But I also think that it's, at the same time, it's also the most fixed and least discretionary part of our budget, that it's, you know, it's like the payroll is the payroll, the people are getting what their contracted salaries are. And I, I think that the, you know, where the more discretionary aspects of district spending are really in the rest of the warrants, where all the invoicing and all the non-salary accounts are, I think that that's actually where, you know, most of our attention, you know, needs to go as far as oversight of, you know, budgetary issues in the district. The payroll is kind of just what it is, and I, I mean, I, I think, I really do appreciate the point, but I don't know if it's strictly necessary.
I live the same mind. I agree, too, however, the one thing that I will just say about this is it says chairman.
That's if I just crossed that, I was going to mention that, yeah, we should have caught, we didn't catch that. So it should say School Committee Chair.
So in saying that, never mind. Not going to say anymore. No, no, I answered my own question.
Oh, okay.
Kathy kicked in for a minute.
So, okay, so are we, are we comfortable with that? Thank you. All right, and we will make that change from chairman to chair. Thank you, Mr. Smaha. D H, I don't have any comments on that. Is that okay with everyone? It's bonded employees and officers. And then we have D I, which is Fiscal Accounting and Reporting. There's some comments on this one. So you'd like to keep the struck language and then change Director of Finance and Administration to Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, which we should do. So we should change that, definitely. And then thoughts on?
I like the quarterly reports. It gives us a real time, well, real time as to where we are in the status of the budget throughout the year. It's very, I find it to be very helpful, and I think it minimizes any surprises, and I know time to time, unexpected budgetary situations occur, so it does help us balance that area of our, you know, of the budget, where we can kind of clearly see the impacts, and I, I do find it helpful, and I do find it helpful. So in getting it quarterly, it, as a, you know, I find it helpful working down every.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Mr. Agirre, do you have, because you were with us when we struck, what are your, do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah, and one thing we talked about is, you know, determining what, I mean, what type of report, you know, it gets into some detail here that, I don't know, you know, how it's presented. As you know, usually we close the book sometime in September, so we don't truly know the, we know we'll be in the black, I'll say that, but we don't know the final, final number until we close everything out. So this kind of says from, from July, which there isn't a lot of activity through June, but there is, you know, closing the books out, there's still stuff that occurs after June 30th. But it's fine, I mean, this was added a couple of years ago, and, I mean, I can live with anything, we can make anything work. It's just a matter of, you know, the reports, there would have to be another one even, you know, after June 30th, you know, kind of the final one.
I think, I think in the meeting that we were mostly thinking that this policy doesn't need to be nearly this prescriptive, that especially in terms of the exact reports that are going to show up, that, you know, we can rely on a little bit of discretion to give us, you know, for Paul to give us the financial information that, that we need and don't need to detail that.
So can I ask you, what you, what you typically give us would be, is that what's, I mean, what you typically give us, I find to be sufficient? I don't know if, what, how that applies to the recommended strike language is, is the thing, because I like, I think that what we typically get is, I like it, I don't know if anybody's looking for more detail or less detail, but it's helpful to me to see the certain areas where, you know, you have your, the page, it's like a reporting, I just find it.
Yeah, I think when we talked, if I may, it was that there's, there's a lot of detail here versus, you know, the, the school committee will receive periodic financial statements that shows the financial condition of the, of the district. However, it's decided that that's presented, if the school committee wants something different, then they kind of go from there versus it being kind of defined already. I think that's what we kind of talked about, that there's a lot of descriptive information in here versus just something simple that, you know, the school commission can be kept abreast periodically of, you know, financial condition of the district, so.
Because I, I like seeing where we are at certain, I mean, again, repeating myself, forgive me, where we are with certain budget line items throughout the year, what was, you know, what's encumbered, what's expended, just to get an idea of where we're at so that if there's any additional questions and or things that we weren't expecting, and again, I, I look at like 9C, you know, cuts mid-year, you know, which we were shocked with, I, it just.
What about, what if we add it, so it says the school committee will receive periodic financial statements, what if we did quarterly?
I would, I'd like that, I would like quarterly.
Well, we'll receive financial statements quarterly or.
On a quarterly basis.
Quarterly basis. Does that provide a little bit more of that timeline you're looking for?
That, that would be great.
And is that generally what, it's generally what we get, isn't it?
Generally, this, you know, for, for instance, revolving accounts may not make a lot of sense because there is sometime a delay from the time revenues are posted versus expenses that kind of up to date, so some of the, if you can, we kind of wait till they catch up a little bit, but if you're willing to, you know, understand that some revolving accounts are going to look like they're in the red when, you know, revenues are posted and as of July, but expenses are through October, you know, there's mismatches there, but that's fine.
But if you made note to that, you know how you put your little notes, which add clarity?
Yeah, and, and that.
Prevent me from getting a heart attack.
No, no, that's fine, it's just that I don't know what it necessarily.
Helps.
Tells us, you know, because it's, but that's fine, it's, it's, that's fine.
Can I ask you? I, I, I do, like I said, I like what, what you typically give us. What you, what you typically share with the board, is that? My thing is, is it's not just, this, this policy, I don't see this policy just for the here and now with the current administration, it's, it's going to carry out to future administrations when we're, we are all long gone, and I would, you know, that's my only other concern in reviewing this policy, that the clarity behind it so that anyone new coming in can review it and have a basis of, you know, and a basis to start from with regards to, you know, that's the other aspect that, in looking at that, I think that pushed me to kind of see if we, we do need to strike it out. Does it give direction to, for, to a new member or a new central office administrator 10 years from now? Just as, you know.
If I could, 10 years from now, this may be obsolete.
Well, maybe, but chances are, this hasn't been reviewed in how many, in over a decade, right?
Right, and so we're not printing out really so much, now we're, now we've moved to Google Docs. So I, I think that this is so prescriptive, it's so, so limiting. I think that I'm always of the mind that regulations should instruct without limiting. Now, let me, let me, let me retract that to some degree. There should be ability to move within these regulations for the benefit of the committee, and this is so detailed that it would limit the ability to do that.
So can I ask you in reference to the C M R, 603 C M R, is that the language in that? That statute law, Board of Education?
This is the language from the M A S C Policy Handbook, and they've referenced C M R, so I'm not, we could do that, we could look at that and see. So I'm going to actually suggest that we bring this back to the subcommittee, because there might be some, although we don't have to do the chart or print out, but there may be other language in here that we think maybe we should include, and we'll do that in February, and then we'll bring it back for our first read. Okay?
If I may.
Sure.
This policy was significantly altered, but I think a lot of the stuff that struck was added in 2016.
So can I ask you, would it, if we still have it, we must have it, because it must happen in a policy book, can we look at the previous, how it was previously written and maybe that might?
Try and find that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then D I E, Audits, I didn't have any comments, is everyone okay with that? Okay, great. So I have that, just to make sure we're all on the same page. We're going to do another first read of D A, D B C, and D I. But moving to a second reading, I have D B, D B D, D B I, D D, D F D, D G A, D H, and D I E.
Don't forget also, in here but not on this agenda was D B G.
Yeah, so that'll have to go for a first read.
Because it wasn't on the agenda?
Because it wasn't on the agenda, yeah. So next time coming back, that just helps to make sure that we put the right ones in the right place. Okay, thanks so much, everybody, and thank you, Mrs. Burns, for going through these and such, really paying so much attention to them, it is very helpful, we appreciate it.
Thank you, can I, I'm sorry, before we move on, so for first readings again is D B C?
D A.
D A, oh, excuse me, D A.
D B C.
D B C.
D I. And D B G.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Moving on, we have Subcommittee Reports. Are there any Subcommittee Reports?
Yes. Let me find it, talk amongst yourselves. Wanted you'd be proud of me that I actually.
I'll just, I'll just quickly mention, we have an Outreach Committee meeting coming up 1/29. Is that what you have on your calendar, Mrs. Newhouse?
I mentioned that we had to cancel the C P A C, the January C P A C meeting because of scheduling conflicts.
Okay, thank you.
So the, I, I can't remember the date right now, I think we're still scheduling it, but the next one will be in February.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience. So the School Wellness Advisory Committee met yesterday to discuss, they had sent out in December for about three weeks, a school wellness survey for parents that touched upon a variety of different aspects of if their kids eat lunch, if they thought the variety was, there was enough variety, a variety of different questions and points, and only 80 parents responded to it, which at least, it wasn't a great turnout, but at least it was something, it was good data from what it did generate. There will be a student survey going out that they're still working on. They drafted it, we reviewed that yesterday, we're hoping, they're hoping to implement it, I think, at next month, but they are going to revise it for the younger grades, kindergarten through, I think it was third grade. So we're talking about different ideas as to what that could look like and how do we alter the questions to, to meet the age, age appropriate. Also happening is Laura Stinson, where, is along with Dorothy Crowe, creating our February news, March newsletter, discussed about some highlights to include on that. They're hoping to get that out by September 15th, excuse me, February 15th, so they're currently working on that, hoping to touch upon heart health, sleep, the parent, the student survey, just to try to hope that we can elicit a lot of student support as to how they view wellness and health, nutrition within our district. Also happening is, there's going to be upcoming Staff Walking Challenge. So within all the, all the schools, the teachers, or I should say, excuse me, staff are all going to be challenged into, are all going to be challenged into steps, they're all going to be counting steps, and I guess they're still working on the outline and guidelines, but that staff challenge throughout the school system, throughout the districts, are going to start in February, and at the end, there were four pedominers that were donated through the Board of Health from a grant that will be administered to the, I don't know how they're going to determine that, but it's, it's, it's to engage staff in healthy and wellness acts as well, while they're in school, so I think it's, it's great. I'm glad to see something, a fun, challenging thing that the schools can compete against each other, the staff, you know, can compete against each other, that encompasses their own wellness. And so it's always enjoyable and energetic and committee, and I, again, enjoy participating in the creativity that I see with what Mrs. Stinson and Mrs. Crowe brings, bring, bring to this community to, to discuss. So we have a next meeting, will be up in March 24th, and we'll see what, you know, what we are at that point, but, thank you.
Thank you so much for the report. Any correspondence?
None this evening.
Okay. Some future school committee dates and notable agenda items, we have January 23rd, 2020, which is tomorrow evening, the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition presents Marijuana, Vape, and U, it's a community event at Saint. The Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition presents Marijuana, Vape, and You, it's a community event at St. Thomas Church at 7:00 P. M. We urge community members to attend. February 12th, 2020, we have our regular session, school committee meeting, and some upcoming district events. The 29th is an early dismissal day for all schools. January 31st is Rock and Roll Bingo Night. It's an adult night out sponsored by Northside PAC at the Tewksbury Knights of Columbus at 7:00. And then February 1st, 2020, is the Academic Decathlon Regional Competition at Acton Boxborough High School. And if there's nothing further, I have one more motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Ragstall, seconded by Mr. Fenely, all in favor? And that is, I think, unanimous. Mrs. Burns, do you want to? Thanks, everybody.